Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, November 17, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kerzak, can you please call this meeting's order?
Yes, this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the Municipal Building Board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before the Board. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV for your viewing pleasure. Please join me in salute the flag.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of its citizens, one nation, indivisible, individing, and just as far.
I will now take roll call. James Benano.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
Jim Henry is absent. Mayor Moore.
Here.
Jen Souter.
Here.
Daniel Shunamayon.
Here.
Bob Zuckerman.
Here.
Kathy McLaughlin.
Here.
Vice Chair Gunnin is absent today, and Chairwoman Kerzak.
Here. All right, the first item up is the resolution for approval for the Asbury Park Stormwater Ordinance Amendment.
Jack wasn't here, so.
Okay.
Eligible members for this resolution are James Benano, Councilwoman Clayton, Jim Henry, who is absent, Jen Souter, Bob Zuckerman, Kathy McLaughlin, and Vice Chair Michael Gunnin.
All right, can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay. James Benano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Jen Souter?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Kathy McLaughlin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, or can we actually, would you mind if we just deal with the second item first, which is the Asbury Ale House? Could maybe Jack go over what, where we are with that?
Yeah, first, I've reviewed all the notices. They're in proper form, so we have jurisdiction if need be to carry the matter to another date certain. Okay, secondly, due to the nature of the application, it's an amendment to the prior application for specifically asking for perhaps different relief, but also to be relieved of conditions of approval, and the way to handle that is via an amendment. The members who were at the last meeting, I would ask that they review the transcript to make sure they know what the basis were for those requirements before they hear the next application. And the new members that are here, you can, if you watch the video of that, then you can participate as well. The only person in the current board that can't participate is Yvonne, because she voted against it, so she would be ineligible on that, but everyone else is certainly eligible.
Right, we're asking that everybody review these, because this, that particular application was in March of 2022.
That's correct.
And many of these people were not on the board at the time, or they were not here. So at this point, I believe that there's only like three people that are on the board that actually were at that meeting. We need at least five. So I know that anyone that does listen to this has to sign an affidavit saying that, certification that they're, will. So out of the three people that were here, I know that I will commit to watching it, so that we have four at least. We need a few more people that will commit to actually watching. It's one session of AP-TV that.
And those that are eligible, because they were at, were on the Zoom meeting, this was during COVID, Daniel, the mayor, and Jen Souter.
Correct.
Yvonne is not eligible. So then, James, and Bob, and Kathy, I can send the link to?
Yes, please send it to everyone else, so that, we would like them to all, to have as many people be able to participate when we review this again. Because this is like late-breaking news, like on Thursday and Friday, that we did not have enough.
I think this can be moved to December 1.
Yeah, we're going to be asking to carry this application to December 1 without further, without further notice?
Is that, December 1 is our next meeting, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So I'd like to get a motion to be able to move this for to December 1 with no additional notice.
So, Dan? Second?
Second.
Okay. James Benano?
Yes.
Yvonne vote at all?
No.
Nope, okay. Jen Souter?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Kathy McLaughlin?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Kerzak?
Yes.
You can offer the yes and one.
Oh, and Mayor Moore, why did I forget about you? I'm sorry.
Because he already watched it. He already watched it, so.
It's easy watching.
It's easy watching. It's pandemic watching.
It goes fast.
All right, we done with that now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, now we have, the other item that we have on the agenda is a proposed amendment to the Main Street redevelopment plan for Mercy Center?
Good evening, folks. Beth McManus, working for the city, doing some redevelopment work, and this evening we have a referral from City Council for a draft redevelopment plan amendment. Specifically, this is to your Main Street redevelopment plan, the community shopping district. And you might recall, in mid or earlier 2024, I appeared before you with a redevelopment plan amendment that would allow for an expansion of the Mercy Center, which is currently located at the corner of Main Street and Third Avenue. And at that time, the redevelopment plan amendment was to allow for the existing food pantry use to be permitted in the district, and to allow for some redevelopment of that site to accommodate a, essentially, a new facility. Since that time, that redevelopment plan amendment was adopted, and since that time, the Mercy Center has identified a new site that is, that I think is better suited for them, and that's part of the reason why we're.
Let's get you into it. So I must swear affirm, testimony about the given as matter be the truth, the whole truth, and not above the truth.
I do.
Please restate your name for the record, spell it, and your affiliation with the city.
Sure, my name is Beth McManus. I'm Kyle McManus Associates, and I'm working for the city as redevelopment planner.
Thank you.
So since that time, new property has become available that the Mercy Center has acquired, and that's exactly what this redevelopment plan amendment accommodates. So it eliminates the former redevelopment plan amendment by essentially striking those lots and blocks and adding what is this new site that's been identified. And it's at the corner, it's about a block, block and a half away, it's a corner of Main Street and Second, and it's the former Walgreens retail building. And so the concept is simply that that building would be now reoccupied with the Mercy Center and everything they do, including things like a food pantry, a variety of social services, but also a restaurant on the property that's anticipated. And this redevelopment plan is similar to the former version in the sense that it adds food pantry as a permitted use to that specific lot and block, it eliminates it from the former site, and it includes a handful of specific design requirements, as well as a parking requirement, to accommodate the Mercy Center's proposal. There is an additional section, I think it's literally the last change in this redevelopment plan also, that I'd like to talk about, but just to be clear, it is, it is separate and apart from the Mercy Center's proposal, it's just simply a matter of convenience to address these two issues in the Main Street redevelopment plan in one document as part of one amendment. So as you go through the plan amendment, you'll see that it crosses out or eliminates the old block and lot, meaning that the zoning for the site, the redevelopment standards for that property would, would go back to the way they were prior to the previous redevelopment plan amendment, and instead adds this new block and lot, which is Block 2707, Lot 1, and it specifically states that food pantries would be permitted on that particular property. It goes on to allow a second, first or second-story roof garden and/or seating area specific to that property, and it would be subject to screening that the planning board might decide to require during planning board hearing. And then there are a list of specific zoning and design regulations for this specific block and lot. Many of them were accounted for, or excuse me, previously included in the old redevelopment plan amendment and have just been carried forward. And there are a couple of additional ones in here that are specific to the revised proposal. It, for example, requires that parking shall be provided onsite, accessible to visitors, it requires a retail and/or restaurant use on the first floor facing Main Street, and then a handful of other architectural requirements. The component that requires a retail and/or restaurant on the first floor facing Main Street, I think is particularly important, because while we're adding this previously prohibited use to the list of permitted uses, what that requires is that an active commercial use, one that's currently permitted in the redevelopment area, will be front and center, if you will, along Main Street. It means that that street frontage will be occupied with a retail or a restaurant use, just like would be permitted today without the, without the redevelopment plan amendment. So I think that actually moves what might otherwise be simply the addition of a food pantry to the site, I think it actually moves the, the character of the site closer to what's anticipated and what was planned originally in the Main Street redevelopment plan by having that retail or likely a restaurant along that street.
That's going to be all in the existing building, in other words, it's going to be no expansion of the building?
An expand.
The frontage of Main Street, you know, it's set back because there's the parking thing, right?
So the redevelopment plan doesn't require it, but the anticipation is that there is going to be an addition to the property that would be that restaurant that would bring, essentially, bring the building closer to Main Street. And so I want to be clear that this redevelopment plan is not like others that I've done that includes a concept plan and essentially says, thou shalt build this project. This is really about allowing the Mercy Center to move forward, but my expectation is that there's going to be an addition, moving the building closer to Main Street, and that it's going to be two stories.
So now we're just amending for the use, but then the plan itself, conceptually, comfortably?
Absolutely. So while this adds the use, and it adds some particular design and parking requirements, ultimately, the developer will come before this board, will seek site plan approval, and the board will have the opportunity to, to review it, just like it would any other property within that redevelopment area.
All right, can you just clarify a few things for me, if you don't mind?
Sure.
I know that you'd mentioned that the proper prop, the prior property, and I believe that there were like two prior approvals that we've already done, and I don't know if it was the actual plan to the Main Street redevelopment plan or not, because we had done one for Mercy Center itself that exists today, we were, there was going to be new construction on that lot. Is that what you're talking about? Were you talking about where the Dollar Tree was?
Walgreens.
No, no, because she's saying that something is stricken.
So the existing Mercy Center location that exists today on Main and Third?
Yes.
That property was, is subject to a redevelopment plan amendment that came before you as part of this referral process.
Right.
Presumably, the planning board presumably issued site plan approval outside of my experience.
Right, we, that's, that's done, that's not in this?
Correct.
Okay.
So this redevelopment plan, the, the plan amendment that had been adopted includes that a food pantry would be permitted on Block 2805, Lot 17, that's the Main and Third Avenue site, that is literally struck or eliminated from this redevelopment plan, essentially voiding that previous amendment.
Okay.
And is replacing it with Block 2707, Lot 1.
Can, can someone tell me what Third and Main is?
Was that the Dollar Tree?
What is that?
No.
It's where the, where they're existing.
Where the Mercy Center is.
Yeah, it's on the east side of Main Street.
Okay.
It backs up to, to residences.
Right, I know where the regular Mercy Center is.
Exactly.
That one.
Right.
Okay, so what's being stricken? I'm not understanding what's being stricken.
The existing site where the Mercy Center exists?
Yes.
Will no longer be subject to any special zoning.
Okay.
It'll just simply be subject to, to the Main Street redevelopment plan as it existed in early 2024, 2023, and earlier.
So, so the existing Mercy Center, that was, there was an amendment for that use there, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
Now that will go away from that site?
Yes.
That's, that's the clarity that I wanted, yes.
Correct.
And what's happening to that property?
That is, that's going to be, I would have to defer to the Mercy Center, they're simply going to manage their, their property as they see fit, but there's no current redevelopment request for that property.
So in other words, they will cease operations, so that use, we're striking that use there at that site, so that use will not continue as the use goes, like the old writing?
I don't want to speak for the Mercy Center, but I would say a food pantry will not be permitted on that property.
Well, what else? With the Mercy Center, it's used for other purposes, right?
Yeah, they're doing social services as well.
The whole users were not, were part, they were permitted already?
No, none of that was, was permitted. The Mercy Center is currently occupying the site as a, as a existing non-conforming use, and so they're on, as a result of being within a redevelopment area, they are unable to relocate to this new site without a redevelopment plan amendment. And so that's why this plan amendment has been proposed, it is to, to allow for them to relocate to this, I think, in my professional opinion, objectively better site for, for them and for the city.
But when you say being struck, so it's just the food pantry that's being struck from that site, not the non-conforming use of Mercy Center in that site?
I want to be clear, when I'm talking about something being struck, I'm talking about the language in a redevelopment plan. I, I don't want to represent the future plans and use of that facility. That is simply between the Mercy Center and the city's planning, zoning, and construction departments.
I can clarify this. Is there any provisions in the proposed ordinance that strike or change what can be put at the other property?
No. It eliminates the previous redevelopment plan amendment that was applicable to that property.
So then, whatever was approved pursuant to that redevelopment plan amendment is no longer going to be valid?
Right. So if Mercy Center wants to continue to own that space, rent it out to another group that wants to do a food pantry there, it will not be permitted to use.
It would not be permitted to use, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's as if we are, it's as if we're taking the old redevelopment plan amendment and withdrawing it, or, yeah, withdrawing it and then adding a new proposed amendment here. It just happens to be in a single document.
Okay.
But aside from the food pantry, whatever the non-conforming use was, that is not impacted at all by this, and that may continue? No. Whatever, the way you, let me interject, whatever was, whatever was approved pursuant to the amendment that allowed it to be there on the corner of Third is now going to go away.
The intention is they're going to pick their operation up at Main, from Main and Third, and move it to Main and Second.
So whatever they did over here is now going away, it's actually being picked up and moved over here. But I thought Beth said that what Mercy Center was doing before the amendments was subject to a non-conforming use. No, it was not a non-conforming use.
Food pantries are not, are specifically not permitted within the Main Street redevelopment plan.
So that was previously existing, the food pantry here before the amendment?
It, it must have been, I can't speak to the history, I can tell you that it is specifically prohibited. It is specifically prohibited in the redevelopment plan, except for areas where an amendment may specifically permit it.
I missed it, what?
Food pantries are prohibited within the entirety of the Main Street redevelopment plan, except for an area that an amendment potentially this evening would allow for.
Okay, but what else is Mercy Center doing at the current location that was, that is a non-conforming use, besides a food pantry?
They, they have a variety of, that's, that's largely it. They run some social services, they run office space, those are the, the only here, the only issue here that is a, an issue of a prohibited use is the food pantry.
That's it?
That's it, that's it.
Whatever they're doing, the only food pantry is prohibited?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any concern, and I mean, logistically, a transition time or anything like that? Because I can't imagine that it's like one day you're going to go from here to here, and it's just going to turn on and off. So we're okay with this? I'm guessing that there's some transition time?
Yeah, and the nature, and the reality is that Mercy Center is a nonprofit, they're raising funding, they still need to come before you for site plan approval, they'll have to presumably receive that site plan approval from you, go through the resolution compliance process, and all of that takes time.
Yes.
And will allow for, allow for the transition, and beyond that, I would need to defer the organization.
Yeah, but so that's, that's in there, that's in this?
It's just inherent in, in moving from one location to another within, within any, pretty much any municipality, you've got to go through site plan approval, and that alone is a multi-month process, there's also fundraising, et cetera, just to, to get any organization ready for such a big.
I'm just, I'm just concerned that if we say today, okay, what happens? Now, now, all right, we've got the okay for this site, now, well, what, the other site should be gone, but it can't be.
No, the other site will remain in place until they close it.
Until they close, and then they go over.
Yes.
And that's in this resolution?
No, this, this does not address the existing property. It only permits a food pantry on the new property.
Okay.
Well, it has to withdraw, I mean, we're not having two food pantries, so it's moving the use from one location to the other.
Yes, it's moving.
So in that sense, it isn't.
Yes, it's moving the permitted use from one location to the other. My point is, it does not, it does not facilitate planning or redevelopment of the other property, it just simply takes that permitted use that was applied to Block 2805 and essentially moves it to Block 2707.
Yeah, the first page of the proposed ordinance, at the very bottom, talks about, whereas the Mercy Center, an existing food pantry and community service organization requested, the city considered amendment to the Main Street redevelopment plan to permit replacement of the existing facility at the corner of Main Street and Third Avenue, Block 2805, Lot 17. So it's going to absolutely be replaced and taken out.
Yep.
Right here.
I'm looking at these matters, I have like a slightly unrelated.
You're looking at the ordinance.
Question about page three?
Is another document?
Yes, this is the resolution.
This is the proposed amendment to the Main Street.
My question is, so the new language is underlying? Yes. I would like to, I have, Michelle raised an issue to me, I'm, I don't know what the, I'm concerned there's a track changes issue in this redevelopment plan that I wanted to talk to folks. Because I, the version I have that I'm concerned may have been distributed to my own fault, not to, not to anybody else's states, vehicle access using Third Avenue is prohibited.
That's.
It's a track change, it was just a track change that didn't get carried through properly. That, that's meant to be struck and eliminated. So perhaps that needs to be a recommendation from the planning board, to the extent that it's just, it's just not applicable anymore.
Page three, it's.
Yeah, that goes, I brought that out from Michelle.
I'm sorry, that prohibition is.
Not applicable, because this site is no longer on Third Avenue.
I was trying to, it's like.
Yeah.
Well, should we, should we be addressing the exhibit and giving it a number and all those things?
Yeah, all right, what we'll do is, let's enter into evidence, the resolution of referral, Marie, let's call that C1, and that is resolution, Mayor and Council, dated October 22, 2025, and it's number 25, 2025-430, Amendment to the Main Street Redevelopment Plan, we'll make that C1, and then we'll make the proposed ordinance amendments, C2, that was attached to the file. And what we'll do is, when we make our recommendations, we'll recommend that the ordinance be so amended to a vehicle act, the language vehicle access using Third Avenue is prohibited, because it doesn't apply.
Yep.
Is that the only issue with the track?
Yeah, I went after that, I was alerted that I went through to make sure everything was, everything else was correct, yeah.
Anything else?
Um, I, before I move off the Mercy Center, I just want to address the last item, which is unrelated to that. So if folks take a look at page four, in section four, what you'll see is a change to, to the section of the redevelopment plan that addresses when site plan approval is necessary for essentially reoccupancy of non-residential uses. And so this expands the types of applications that will require site plan approval. Right now, there, there has been an interpretation from the zoning board that I believe any reoccupancy of a non-residential use does not require site plan approval. What this does is it requires that site plan approval would be necessary when, it would state that all, all non-residential uses, except, all non-residential uses may be exempt, except when non-residential use is proposed in an existing non-residential space, or when the establishment of the non-residential use does not alter any site conditions, and the floor area of the use does not require more parking than the existing use. So essentially, where you have, let's say, a retail that is vacated, and a new permitted use would go in that has a higher parking demand, perhaps a restaurant, it ensures that they come back before the planning board for site plan review and approval, and importantly, so that the board can judge whether or not there's adequate parking on the property. And so this essentially eliminates that loophole, I think, in the favor of the city.
Shouldn't, I spoke to Michelle earlier today, shouldn't that language on the second line where it says non-residential space or, shouldn't it be and/or, as opposed to or? Because there's still an exemption there.
I, I have no, no concern with adding and, and making it and/or.
Did Michelle talk to you, James, about this today?
No, I don't know what this is.
Okay. I thought she was going to. Okay, yeah, I want to make sure there's no gap.
Yeah, so it's going to be an and/or.
There is a gap now, we want to, the city wants to fill the gap.
Yep.
Absolutely, I think that's just another level of protection.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so with that, that's the, that's the content of the plan amendment, like I said, it really does two things, it closes this loophole and facilitates a different site to be utilized by the Mercy Center.
Okay. Do the board members have any questions?
Are there, are there parking requirements for commercials property in the Main Street redevelopment? I thought most of our redevelopment plans didn't have parking requirements for commercial space.
Uh, no, you do have non-residential, uh, let's see, I can pull that up. It's on page 43.
All right, so you're saying there is?
Yeah.
So now, whenever something comes into an already existing, not a residential space, if it comes, it changes the, if the use is slightly different and it has a, a higher required parking, they have to before us based on this, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and it triggered, it's triggered by the site plan requirement. The way it's written now, the zoning board found that there was no site plan required for what was proposed, and the only way you get, the only way you got the parking was through site plan approval. So now, that's a gap that you had in your ordinance, so this will close that gap.
So for example, a supermarket, just as an example, requires 3.5, minimum of 3.5 spaces per thousand square feet, but a restaurant requires 15 parking spaces per thousand square feet. So if it goes from a supermarket to, to a restaurant, this ensures that they need site plan approval.
Okay.
I have a question about the last bullet on page three, that says, excluding pitched roofs, a sustainable rooftop shall be provided in and on new, it says, on all new building move areas, which I'm assuming is to designate, that would be for the expansion or the new piece in this case.
Correct.
And it says, the roof area shall consist of cool white roof, green roof, and/or solar panels, and then any, then it says, any proposed rooftop garden or seating area shall be excluded from this requirement. Now, I understand why that's there, but, well, actually, I don't understand, I mean, I understand what it means, but I'm not quite sure why that's there. They're saying if you were going to have a seating area that has like a guard, a restaurant, entertainment, not entertainment, but you have the place that you sit, none of that has to apply, like you don't have to have, I'm just confused as to.
Well, no, I, I mean, I think the, the intent is to recognize that having the, you can't provide a cool, right, cool white roof or a green roof or solar panels where you have the rooftop seating area.
Like where it actually is, but it doesn't exempt it from, like, is the whole, I guess it depends how it's designed, because I'm not, I've read that as, if you have, is it, is a concept, if there's a concept that has the entire roof, I mean, you could have a black thing that, I mean, you could design in a way that's not achieving the goals here. Like just having a rooftop seating area doesn't necessarily meet the goal that's intended by having a sustainable roof, you know what I'm saying?
No, if the concern is that if you have. No, if the concern is that if you have a a roof area that's 4,000 square feet, just as an example, but you have a 500 square foot seating area, it doesn't exempt the other 3,500 square feet. It just exempts the 500 square feet.
That's that's what I mean. So it's only that area. I don't know if that's 100% clear to everybody, it wasn't to me. But then also, but what if you have a 4,000 square foot seating area?
Uh, if you I would say, one, they need to come to the planning board and the planning board would would discuss that. You guys have the ability to add screening to the extent necessary. But admittedly, this does not specifically prohibit or limit the size of a of a rooftop seating area.
Okay, but it's saying that if you have roof, it has to meet the sustainable aspect of the roof. If there's a roof on that.
Yep, excluding a pitched area and excluding a seating area, like a pitched roof area and excluding a seating area, it's got to be white, green or solar, essentially.
But for seating area, it doesn't have to be anything.
Yeah, that's true. If you have it, if the entire rooftop is a seating area, it would be excluded. It would be excluded from this requirement.
So we don't limit?
No, that's what you would do as a planning board when they come before you. If they say, we got this little restaurant, we want to put.
We're allowed to.
Yeah, yeah, you could say, wait a minute. You can't have 4,000 seats on that rooftop. Doesn't make any sense. So you can tell them, you know, what you want to do.
But do we have a leg to stand on?
Yeah. Yeah, as a planning board, I would think you would. Aren't there regulations about how many seats you can have in a restaurant?
On a rooftop, on a rooftop on the Main Street redevelopment plan.
So I mean, a restaurant is based on floor area, but if it's if the board finds that the rooftop area is part of the floor area, presumably it would it would then generate a parking requirement.
Yeah.
Um, additionally, the board has the power to screen it to the extent you're concerned about the the visual or the sound impact of having what.
Right, the HVAC up there.
Yeah, exactly. But and and to that point, you know, I think it's important to remember you're also likely going to have building mechanicals up there.
Right.
Although I don't want to I don't want to assume lack of creativity from an architect, but that's a pretty typical building design.
But but the the whole premises of this, you know, about solo, white or green isn't environmentally based, right? So it's not just being screened or something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, why should we not limit, you know, to a percentage of what the roof area could be for seating?
I mean, if the board.
Yeah, because if we don't have to stay on, we can't limit.
I have a recommendation that I would have you make. It says, and this, just the essence is make sure you recommend to the mayor and council when they amend the ordinance that they can't avoid putting a roof up by increasing, you know, a ridiculous amount of open floor, there's space for seating. There should be some regulations imposed, that there's some ratio.
Mm hmm.
Yes.
So.
Right, and is that something that we can reasonably put in here?
Well, the other thing is the when it says against the language thing, but it says any proposed rooftop garden or seating area shall be excluded. So why would a rooftop garden like that's confusing me too? Because if if the if you're doing like an amenity, for example, why would that be excluded from being a green? Like they could design it to be a green roof and it'd be a garden and it would serve the same purpose, but.
They might be a green roof is it's just simply a recognition that sometimes a rooftop garden is not necessarily a green roof in the sense that green roofs can have specific stormwater management requirements. And it allows for that to to sit as a separate engineering or an architectural item as opposed to a green roof that's intended to that typically has a has a different visual impact and different engineering requirements for collection of stormwater, et cetera. It's just a recognition that they're two different types of plantings.
But why would we want like, why wouldn't we understand the seating area?
I mean, it's sort of six of one half a dozen the other because you might be exempting it from the green requirement, but you've got the but it's a rooftop garden anyways. So you're not if the I'm not.
Well, it's not it's not providing the benefits of a green roof. That's what I'm saying, like, exactly the reason that you're saying.
But then just is the the request to eliminate a rooftop garden from being permitted?
No, from being excluded.
But but you can't. I'm happy to do whatever the board would like, but I'm not but.
No, this is limited to this piece of property.
Oh, is it? This is not for the Main Street redevelopment area?
No, no, no.
This is just for this property?
It says specific zoning and design regulations for block 2707 lot one.
Yeah.
Doesn't say throughout the district.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's limited to one property.
Okay. All right. That's clearly not the intention here at all.
Yes, I I think it's fine for one. I just would the why the reason I even raised it was because if a seating area can't really be a white roof or a green roof or.
Sure.
But a rooftop garden could be very not environmentally beneficial. Like it could be better than a black roof, perhaps, but not.
It doesn't have the same benefit, it doesn't.
Right, it's not doing what it's not doing what we're asking. The reason for asking for a cool green or a rooftop garden doesn't. It's not apples to apples.
No, it's it's I agree. It's two separate purposes. One is for the stormwater management and other environmental impacts. The other is maybe it's for aesthetics around a seating area or to to grow functional plants, food, for example.
Yeah, I think I understand. I just I think it's fine the way that it's here for this site. And then as long as if it were to come and be an issue that we could describe, again, this is for one site and it's for one particular project, that it's not that you can't just go do what you said and take away. Say, we have seating here, so we don't have to meet these roof requirements because we have this square footage of seating that's on a block. It's not meeting the intent of the goal, you know what I'm saying?
Mm hmm. If the board wants to make a recommendation, I can try to craft a limitation on on the exceptions. That might be something that could address some of the concerns I've heard.
Do you feel that that's something that you would would be more comfortable with seeing?
I think it's okay because it's this one.
Because it's one because it's this site.
I think if it were something that many people are going to come to us and have all these different interpretations of what this means, that would make me very nervous.
No, I I agree. If it was something that could be exploited throughout the city, if this were amendment that were applicable to all of Main Street, for example, I I think this would be written to be much more limited or to include more standards.
Yeah.
But wouldn't we want to limit though? I mean, wouldn't we want to say something like, you know, more than 50% of the roof area, of non-pitched roof area could be excluded? I mean, wouldn't we want to put a limitation on it?
I mean, I definitely would if it was the whole whole Main Street.
Excuse me?
I definitely would if it was the whole Main Street in this site.
Right, can't can't we just figure out tonight's agenda and we go from there down the road? Make recommendations to the council as far as future?
Yeah.
Yeah, for for tonight's, this is it. You're saying for tonight, this is what it is. But if it was, we want something for Main Street as a whole, that's a whole nother issue.
Let's skip back to what's on the agenda tonight.
Well, it's just that it doesn't set a precedent that we said we did this there.
It's the language specifically limits it to this one site. And that's it.
Okay.
If somebody else wants to do another site, they need relief of some form, variance, design exception, whatever.
Anybody else have anything else?
Yeah, so of course, restaurant is is a permitted use, right? Will this be, do we have any idea like how much? How big the restaurant is going to be? Is it going to be is it going to be something like a, you know, not-for-profit, you know, low-cost restaurant? Or is it just going to be, you know, leased out to a restaurant tour? Do we know?
I I'm anticipating one of the the low-cost restaurants, but this redevelopment plan doesn't require that. It simply requires a retail or a restaurant use be constructed facing Main Street.
And if it's a restaurant, it's a restaurant. It folds with it. It doesn't matter, you know, it's a low-cost or regular restaurant.
Correct, as long as it meets the definition of a restaurant. And I think any of the any of the examples that you just cited would certainly do so.
Anybody else? All right, so then we have a couple of restrictions that we want to put on there or or that would modifications to the ordinance?
Yeah, I I.
We have like two.
Amid that Third Avenue reference is irrelevant. Uh, and then on page four, that site plan ordinance requirement that that amendment definitely I spoke to Michelle about this today. I think if China accomplished a certain goal, which she said she put forth before the governing body, that you clarify and make sure so that you run into, you don't run into another gap and somebody comes in and slips out, slips through with non-park. If parking is required, and parking is required, you're doing it through site plan, you need to have to make it get site plan.
Yep. Yep.
And this other one, I wouldn't make the recommendation since Jennifer was authoring the comment, but said since she's okay with this one specific site, unless you tell me to put it in, I'll put it in.
Okay.
So those are the two clarifications, two recommendations we make to the governing body when they get past the ordinance.
Yeah, I just need some open for clarification. So if you can. Food pantry, soup kitchen, what is it? Okay.
The the redevelopment plan does not does not they essentially treat them as the same thing. It refers to soup kitchen, soup kitchens and food pantries as as a single use. So this way, for for better or worse, it doesn't distinguish one way or the other. And that's a carryover from the 2024 amendment.
So the operation of a restaurant, no matter how big it is here.
It's an additional use on the property.
I understand that. You say it's a restaurant, but you know, it's a restaurant. Can a restaurant become a when does it become a food pantry or soup kitchen?
I would have to well, food pantry is is sort of a grab and go. And you know, like a like it's like a free supermarket, for a lack of better terminology. A soup kitchen, I would have to review the definition of a soup kitchen and compare that to a restaurant. And I really haven't done that. Um, my understanding is a soup kitchen is offering prepared foods for free. I don't know that there's counter or versus table service. It's there, but I would I would say I need to I would need to review those definitions to try to distinguish between a low-cost restaurant and a soup pantry.
That's my concern that that if we're approving, you know, that a restaurant is permitted there that is or that they we know that whether it's a for all intents and purposes, it's a soup kitchen, not a not a for-charge restaurant.
Is there is the concern that there would be a soup kitchen soup kitchen constructed along Main Street instead of a restaurant?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I give me one second. I might be if I can answer this question for you quickly, otherwise let me offer a couple of thoughts on it. But let me see if I can answer it definitively.
Is there a soup kitchen as part of a pantry now?
No.
No. No.
Okay, if you read page two of the proposed ordinance, second word as clause, it says, on July 17, 24, mayor and council further amended the plan to permit food pantries as permitted use and related design requirements. Subsequent to the adoption, let's see, Mercy required 2707 lot one for the purpose of relocating the services that they provide on the existing one. So if there's a food pantry there or a soup kitchen there, then it would be it would be a move over. But there isn't. Okay.
The and the city defines a restaurant in your general code as an establishment where beverages and prepared food are served on the premises and where not less than 75% of the gross floor area is devoted to a table or booth dining space for patrons. So I'm I'm not sure that specifically answers your question, but I want to be clear that that's how the city currently ident currently defines restaurants. Um, and it does for a soup pantry. It defines it as an establishment engaged primarily in distributing food directly to the needy for free or at very low cost.
Okay, so, you know, I I just that we know what we're getting into. If we want to, if we want, you know, we call it a restaurant, but it's actually would all intents and purposes be a soup kitchen on fronting on Main Street. If that's what we want, then we should know it, and that's what we should vote for.
No, we don't vote on this. All we do is make recommendations.
Make recommendations. But we should just know what we're getting into and make recommendations.
Okay, nothing wrong with that.
So is that something that you want to make as a what would be the recommendation?
I I don't know. It's it's, yeah.
Wouldn't that be a site plan?
No, what what should be clear is when this was presented to you as a governing body, both members of the governing body, okay? Was it your understanding that this was going to be a closure or taking an existing little operation and moving it over and closing the other?
Yep.
Is that what you understood?
Yes.
Okay. So whatever there whatever is whatever's going on on the corner of Third and Main can go on on the corner of Second and Main plus the restaurant.
Plus the restaurant.
Plus the restaurant. And a restaurant must be at the front.
In addition to the.
Whatever those operations are, I don't know what they are, but whatever they are, that was your understanding. And I'm I'm not so sure the ordinance reads that way. But if you want it to be more specific, we can say you want it to be more specific. That's up to you.
I think when the in regard to the restaurant versus soup pantry issue, when the application is filed before the planning board, it'll be up to the board and and your staff to review the application and confirm that it's that is a permitted use and that it meets the definitions or the requirements of the redevelopment plan. That requirement that I think is an issue is that there is a restaurant located towards the front of this property. The board will be empowered to ask questions and to review the site plan application to determine if it meets that requirement. And you'll be able to ask questions that involve the the layout of the space to confirm that it it looks like a a typical restaurant versus a typical food pantry. And you'll be able to ask questions, receive answers from the operator about the the operation of that use to ensure that it is, in fact, a restaurant that is proposed along Main Street as opposed to a food pantry.
Right, but but I think that what what we're trying to to grapple with here is a recommendation on whether or not the city is okay that it's a restaurant or a soup kitchen, soup kitchen.
I think the simplest way to approach it is.
It wasn't proposed to us as a soup kitchen.
You should identify the existing operations at third.
Okay.
And then you should identify those existing operations that are going to be moved so that you know what you're getting, like you said. You want to know specifically what you're getting.
So let me just say.
And then.
So you have the you have the.
Addition to the building.
Yes.
Yeah, you have the all bar on Main Street. We don't expect any not for any for-profit person restaurateur to, you know, the all bar just says come in, every meal is five cents, no matter what you order, which essentially turns it into almost what we would, for lack of a better term, a soup kitchen. Right, and you have a long line, everybody. That might be a fear with a not-for-profit like Mercy said. But if that is something we want, because I I guarantee this, it's got to be very difficult to make it specific because, you know, we can't get into, say, what you could charge. We can't get into economics or anything like that. I mean, I may be bringing up a problem that doesn't really have a solution.
Well, I I think the simplest way is you identify what is allowed on the corner of Third and Main. And then you identify that that is what's being moved over here.
Mm hmm. With the addition of.
With the addition of the restaurant.
Of a restaurant.
Doesn't that kind of simplify it?
Yes, I think from an understanding for the board, but I I would say what's happening on the existing property at the Mercy Center is not subject to this redevelopment plan amendment, is not subject to the board's recommendation, except to understand that the previous the redevelopment plan amendment that allowed for soup kitchen and food pantry will no longer be applicable to the main and third property.
Go back to square one on that property, basically.
Yeah, it's exist as if the other redevelopment plan amendment never happened.
Yeah, that's in the same way. It's being abandoned. It's being substituted over in another location.
Yeah, this redevelopment plan amendment, in terms of permitting something new, it only deal only deals with main and second.
Right, yeah.
So that's it.
Yeah, I get that.
I think I think they think that it's that it's understood that we're looking at at the food pantry and adding a restaurant to it and.
Dan, I have a question for Dan. Dan, is it is it a concern that there would not be a restaurant fronting Main Street, but it would be a soup kitchen fronting Main Street?
That it would be.
Closest to the current.
That it would be that what I call it a restaurant, but if it's so low cost, it acts as it is a soup kitchen.
But.
I don't know how you should I don't think how you can stop that.
Right, but you're right, but it's the same thing that you just. Right, but you're right, but it's the same thing that you just said, Dan, before. It's kind of like the R-bar could do the same thing. Yeah?
Exactly.
Yeah, we don't have anything in the state that prevents it.
You know, they wouldn't.
No, you can't require it.
You know, they wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't. That's why I said, I don't know if there is a solution.
Is there, there is a definition of what a restaurant is?
Yes, yeah, the city.
And then is there, there's also a definition of what a food pantry.
A soup kitchen.
Kitchen consists of. So they're two different things. I mean, you, you are talking about sort of micromanaging what they do with their space.
No, no, we're putting, first of all, you know what I mean? You're putting, you're putting, you're putting in uses, I mean, it's not so specific, but you're, right. But you're putting in a restaurant, you're putting in a use, then you're assuming that it's for-profit incentive. You can't do, what I'm saying is.
Well, then, or it's for-profit, not as irrelevant from zoning perspective.
I understand that. Well.
Yeah. We don't, we don't regulate economics.
No, I mean, listen, I. If a restaurant, if a restaurant for Willa-Pence Park was a soup kitchen, okay, it would have different characteristics.
As long as, if it's clearly defined in the ordinance, you look to the ordinance definition.
They have two separate definitions.
If a restaurant is defined and you got a soup kitchen or food pantry, and/or, or exclusive defined, then you look to those definitions and see the document, operation that they're operating.
You can get into those details during the site plan.
Well, you, when it comes to us, well, you want clarity, is it, what exactly is being proposed? Restaurant to the ordinance, how does it fit within the four corners of the definitions within the ordinance?
But also the reality is, right, if it, if it's functioning as a restaurant, it doesn't matter. I mean, we're just saying, yes, restaurant, whatever is charged is not relevant to us.
Correct.
It's just a space that's functioning as.
Yeah, as a restaurant.
As a restaurant, under the definition of restaurant.
Under the definition of restaurant, the board will have the ability to question the applicant about the, the intent for the space based on operations, perhaps the layout, intended customer base, and you'll be able to compare those answers to the definition of a restaurant versus the definition of a soup, soup kitchen, and be able to make your findings as to whether or not it's a permitted use on the site.
That's for me.
All right, okay. All right, I'd like to make a.
What do you want?
Go ahead.
You don't have to add public participation in this sort of thing. This is more of a, this is.
Well, if there's someone from the public that would like to, like to make a comment, I'm happy to.
Okay.
To open it up, actually, it would be any questions to, to Beth, is there any?
Yeah, she has, she is, subject to cross.
Yeah, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to question Beth, this is your time. Okay, all right, then I'd like to open up, if there's any comments from the public that would like to make any comments about this particular project. Okay?
Okay.
Motion to close.
What do you got?
There you go. All right, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application.
It's not, you're making.
I mean, the, making the, approve the recommendations?
Our task is to specifically find, before we do that, Beth, is, are these amendments consistent with the master plan?
I do believe they are. I've taken a look at your 2017 reexamination report, and I saw a handful of, of planning goals that I think speak to, for example, revitalizing the Main Street redevelopment area. That's a goal 5.1, 0.2, 0.4. Also to upgrade the appearance and function of neighborhood business areas. The additional design requirements of item 5.2, 0.1, 0.2 are in service or supportive of that planning goal. And then additionally discourage the use of storefronts for inappropriate non-commercial uses such as churches, residences, et cetera. 5.2, 0.1, 0.13, I think the addition of a retailer, restaurant also helps to support that planning goal as well.
Any inconspicuous inconsistencies?
No, I don't, I was unable to identify any, anything that's specifically inconsistent.
That's our task, to identify whether or not there are any specific inconsistencies and whether or not it's consistent with the master, the current master plan as revised for the city and such other items as you deem relevant and just, to put it in layer-like terms, which is why you'd make these recommendations. So that's what we're doing, to pass it on to the mayor and council with the recommendations.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve those recommendations that we just discussed.
Second.
The second?
Dan.
No, it's Dan, sorry, okay.
James Benato?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Jen Souter?
Yes.
Dan Shoneo?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Kathy McLaughlin? And Chairwoman Garzac.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn. Thank you.
I. Thank you, everyone.